Call a meeting order and stand for the pledge, please. Okay, we'll get the motion to accept. The minutes have gone.
That's a move.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do you motion accept the financial bills and the payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. No amendments?
No, not today.
Okay. Chief?
Mayors, mister, tonight, we are honored to be promoting two or officers from the Elton Police Department. Please stand as I call your name. Matthew Donovan, going on 23 years with the Elton Police Department. Came in October of 89. Made Officer First Class in 1994, Corporal in 1995, Sergeant in 1998, Lieutenant in 2002, and now Captain in July this year. Matt has Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, graduated from the 228th Session of the FBI National Academy, and he will serve as the Assistant Chief of Police. Joe Zerillo. Joe is a 16-year veteran in the Police Department, came in June of 1996, made Officer First Class in 1999, Corporal in 2002, Sergeant in 2006, First Sergeant in 2009, and Lieutenant now in July this year. Joe also holds an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice and is a graduate of the 244th Session of the FBI National Academy, and he will be the commanding officer of Special Operations Bureau. Both of you should come forward, please. And raise your right hand. And repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
I'd be. I'd be down Joe Zerillo.
Joe Zerillo, happy down.
You swear in firm? That I support the Constitution of the United States.
I like the word Constitution of the United States.
And I will be faithful. And be faithful, bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
Bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And I will.
That if that's my skill in judgment?
If that's my skill in judgment.
Still as in me and faithfully?
Still as in me and faithfully.
Without partial to your presence?
Without partial to your presence.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state. And that's a great place.
You can pick the family out to have, don't you?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, Louis.
Order 7-212. Order 7-212 of 2012 of Mansys Code, Chapter 9.04 Alcoholics Beverages, specifically Section 9.0410, Public Disposal and Strict Disposition of Alcoholics Beverages by patrons of a restaurant with outside seating and serving premises. Principal Amendment to Section 9.0410. In paragraph H. You can't hear me?
No. I see you're on this phone.
That's why we moved all the chairs up close, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but.
Next year, we're only gonna, I mean, next week, I'm gonna put the chairs up here.
You have the chair for me?
A principal amendment to Section 9.0410 includes the additional paragraph, additional paragraph H, which states, alcoholic beverages may be consumed by patrons of a restaurant as defined by the Elton zoning ordinance, licensed to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on the restaurant premises, inclusive of a seating and serving area outside the building as an integral part of the premises of the restaurant. Or, I mean, ordinance 7-2012 is presented for introduction.
Okay, can you get motion accept of Order 7-2012?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. All right, Joe.
What was the motion?
Charlie and I believe.
I made the motion, I and Charles and Charles.
Could you clarify that for me?
Louis, they would like you to clarify what we just passed.
Yeah. What do you mean I don't have?
Clarify what this law about?
What the ordinance is about.
That, to clarify, the restaurant serves alcoholic beverages, and it has an outside serving and seating area as part of that restaurant, then patrons may consume alcoholic beverages in that area. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Joe, you have any old business?
Old business, I know, we've had a lot of people question some unsightly property on High Street, so if we could just give an update on that, Louis, because I know some things did happen this week, and I'd like the public to be aware of it.
Well, the property of 240 East Min, uh, High, I'm sorry, 240 West High Street was condemned, and the owner, Riddle Properties, I mean, Riddle Holdings, had been notified of the condemnation and notice of violation.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Say the same thing, but it's already been taken care of.
All right.
Yes, at one time, we talked about helping the YMCA, they having a problem with a septic tank. There was a lot of entities that were supposed to be a part of that, Artesian Water, the county government, and the town of Elton, and we were gonna help them in that dire situation. I sent Louis a letter today, he emailed a letter back to me, and you as well, and I'm still, I still think we need to follow through on what we started. I think that was in 2009. And I know Louis sent a letter back saying it would be significant money for a major facilities fee, which would be an amount of $134,000, but trust me, they do have that money. So if we could help them in whatever way we can, certainly it would be applaudable. I need a response from Louis.
I'm not exactly sure how to respond, because the assets that we were relying upon were county assets, and now with Artesian, were Maryland assets, and I've not had an intimate discussion with Artesian about those assets and how they can be used for this project. The alternative would be to build a force main from scratch would be very, very expensive to do, several hundred thousand dollars probably.
Well, how come there cannot be a conversation with you sitting down with the YMCA, and Artesian, and everybody else? It really has nothing to do with us, nothing, basically, all we're doing is just helping a dire need with the YMCA. I mean, pretty soon, if that septic system doesn't take control, they're gonna shut them down. And, you know, we're here to be friends of everybody, I guess, and certainly, at a time like this, as they look forward to trouble ahead, they can use somebody's help. I mean, we all, as a group, sat here and talked about giving them the help, and...
Can I try to?
Yes, you may.
Have we, have we determined what type of help we were able to give?
The, what has changed in this situation, and Commissioner Givens is aware of it, is that the water line that the county is going to convey to the town for the transmission line is no longer the county's, it was given to, was conveyed to Artesian Ward in Maryland.
That's right.
That changed the whole, whole formula for doing this project. The conveyance of that pipe, pipe from, the four-inch, from Artesian to Elton is probably contingent on the board's passage or approval of the Third Amendment. So that's their leverage against the town. It's up to the board how, how you're gonna respond to that particular thing. The option would be who's billed?
It's whose leverage?
Force main. Artesian.
I'm sorry?
Artesian.
What kind of leverage, what kind of leverage are you talking about? They don't have it against us, and we're trying to help somebody?
I'm not saying it's against us, I'm saying they would use that in order for us to approve the Third Amendment, then they would convey it. If we don't, I don't know, I guess they won't.
You're assuming that they would hold that against us?
No, I'm just saying what was stated in the proposal that they submitted to the town, that's what's stated in there.
And I think we've started some email dialogue back and forth this week with Artesian, so to bring things back on the table again, and we should find out exactly what the Y is up against right now, and what's needed, and their timetable, and what our, what we do, I'm sure will have an effect on the YMCA.
Well, this, this line, I don't know what we're called.
Right.
The line wasn't initially for YMCA, it's for realignment of the State Highway Force Main.
Exactly.
The, it had nothing to do with the YMCA, it's just that we're realigning our force main. But because of the route and the contact with YMCA about their problem, we could include them in it, and of course, they had the front do some planning on their end, engineering, in order to tie into the force main that we would provide for the State Highway Administration. So project, scope of work goes beyond the YMCA, goes clear over to the other side of Route 40 to tie into the force main from the State Highway Garage. So there's a lot of, a lot of elements here.
Significant change.
Beyond just YMCA's needs.
Could you help clarify this for me? When we first got into this with the YMCA, I know initially, because George and everybody was here, we initially said that we were gonna seek out as much help we can to help them out. And through Artesian, Artesian had made an agreement that they would help also, but through this same investigation, it found out that Artesian was the one to put in this main pump, is that correct? Not the town of Elton? It wasn't our own, it wasn't our, it was our understanding that we was gonna put the pump in, or we found out that Artesian owned that pump, is that correct?
There isn't a pump.
No, but ownership of that pump?
There isn't a pump.
I understand that, I'm saying.
What they're talking about is an interconnect on the 12-inch water line that the town, I mean, Artesian had initially asked the town to fund and to construct. But since the town, I mean, the county conveyed the water lines, they were the county's water lines anyway, they conveyed everything to Artesian, then Artesian obviously would have to build it. We're not gonna build anything to Artesian.
I think what Givens is looking for is to, to either make some kind of conversation with Artesian and the Y, to see if they're still gonna go on with their, their portion of help in the Y, because that was one thing. That shouldn't include us in a no deal with the town of Elton, other than they, they offered the help. I know you can't make Artesian do this, but maybe remind them that they said, said they was gonna help, don't throw it into a three-way deal with the town of Elton. If you're gonna help the YMCA, you're gonna help the YMCA. Either you are or you're not, that's the, that's what Givens is saying. And if not, then the town, we said we would help if we can. But if Artesian's not gonna allow us to participate and help, then we know where we stand. Is that what you're looking for?
That's exactly right. Louis knows it.
You know, I think we could be some, some sort of ambassador, you know, on behalf of the Y, to make some sort of comment for help.
Well, we just got a letter, an email from Diane Taylor asking to have another meeting, so that might be an opportune time to say something or deal with her and discuss that.
It uses the house of power to convey that, well, Artesian has the power personally, but to convey that line to the town, if you want.
What would it cost us? When they try, I mean, they'd cost.
When the project starts, it'll cost quite a bit, because we have to construct all the lines from the other side of Route 40, tie into the force main. That's the pumps on the, that we own. At the State Highway Garage will pump the force main to the gravity main on 545 Blue Ball Road. That's our project. What they'll do, the YMCA will tie into that.
Yeah, that's exactly what they wanna do, that's correct.
We have to determine if our pumps can pump against the head produced by their pumps put out in there, and otherwise, we'll have to upscale our pumps, so we don't go that certain way.
And here's actually, the paragraph in Artesian's Third Amendment, which says Route 77 interconnection, "Artesian will convey to the town for no consideration ownership of Artesian's 4-inch water main on Route 279 from Blue Ball Road to mutual agreed location near the YMCA. At the town's expense, the town will relocate the water service interconnection with Artesian to the town's 10-inch water main on Route 7, at a mutual agreed location near the YMCA." And that's where they also need the wielded water of 50,000 gallons to get to YMCA. Is that correct?
Well, it's not correct, because we don't own any lines there anymore. We would not do any interconnects. They're, they initially thought that the county or the town owned them, but they're not owned by the town, they're owned by the town.
The 4-inch line is not owned by the town?
I'm sorry?
Is, is, I'm sorry, that is Artesian's now.
They're all Artesian line.
So it says the town's 10-inch water line main?
Actually, the 12-inch line, and it's owned by the county, always was owned by the county.
So this is incorrect?
The town supplies water to the YMCA through the county's 12-inch water line. Years and years ago, when the Commissioner Sumner was there, remember him, Perryville, he's the mayor of Perryville, he came to county, one of the county commissioners, there was a group of commissioners, who wanted to build a water line up Route 40, sorry, Perryville, and worked their way up 40. Well, as a component of that, when the town wanted to serve YMCA, or actually, the YMCA approached the town to serve, a section of that water main, 12-inch, from between 545 and that, and the YMCA was actually funded by the county as part of that, that project. It never happened, but the line's still there, so it's owned by the county, in the county's right of way. And when the county conveyed its assets to Artesian, all that went to Artesian. Never was the town's.
So then what can the town do to help the YMCA?
I'm not sure, it's not in the town, so I don't know, that's why I'm at a little loss, I'm not used to serving people outside the town, in a sense that, providing engineering services or anything.
Well, let me say this, without all this rhetoric, do you think it's possible that you could have a discussion with Artesian and YMCA to see if there is any component that we cannot provide?
I can do that, if the board authorized, if the board had authorized any help that we would provide, though, I mean, I don't have any.
Didn't say, we could find out what kind of help they would need. We didn't sanction it, we're just asking you to be a mediator.
I think the first thing the YMCA needs to do is sit down and discuss whether or not, I think the annexation needs to take place first. They need to be annexed into the town in order for us to, to be able to service and help them. That's number one.
I don't think they wish to be.
Well, I'm just saying, if you wanna do it the right way, that's the way to do it.
That's corporate.
I don't think they're joining, so they're moving legal qualifications, I'd have to check that, but I don't think they are.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds, obviously, there's been some significant changes, so, so again, maybe it would warrant just some communication from the town to the Y, just to find out if we can help, or how we may help.
There's a question in my mind, board authorizes me to speak to the YMCA and Artesian with regards to any help that can be provided by any party, and I have absolutely no, I just need the board to sanction to do it.
Well, you do, probably, that's what we wanna find out, just bring back the information to us, and let us know what's what, and then we can go from there. That's all.
I think the idea, I don't think it's all, is Louis to be correct.
Yeah.
This 4-inch line that Artesian was gonna convey to town, was the one that they were going to, the county, or the county and YMCA were gonna try to convert into a sewer line.
That's what I thought. That's exactly what I thought.
And that's true.
And that's why they were gonna convey the 4-inch line.
Right.
They were gonna supply water alone, but they, the 4-inch line was to be used as sewer.
Right.
Connect to the city's sewer.
That's right. Thank you.
So maybe something we can continue to talk about, so, I mean, when we talk to Artesian. Because a sewer, it'd be a problem, I guess, out there, it's not necessarily water, I don't think that's.
No, it's a fine water.
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, they don't need to, they don't need to make a three-way ring circus out of this, they need to talk to the Y and get that straight with the Y, and that's what I'm talking, dealing with. We don't need to be tied in a little deal with them if they're planning on helping, that's the point I would like to make.
Well, I think, I think the point for just mentioning that is so that you're aware of the possibility from that, that we aren't aware of it, I'm sorry, I mean, we are aware of that.
Thank you much, people, for joining the conversation.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, one other thing I have, Louis, I got, I guess we got in the mail today, which is pretty nice, from Delmarva. We can put this on our website, let the people know, they may not get this. They will recycle all refrigerators or freezers, and the people will get a $50 reward, and they will pick it up at no additional charge. And they have a number here to schedule a pickup, they will pick it up. That's, but I know we, the, I guess the trash company has been picked, trying to pick up the washers and dryers and things like that, but these guys will do this, you know, to make some money in somebody's pocket, you know, so it'd be nice to let the residents know that Delmarva will do that.
What's the date? What's the date on that?
They just got that today.
No, I mean, what date are they picking up, or is that a date?
Oh, you have to call, schedule a pickup.
Call on schedule?
Yeah. They gave you a phone number, too, I mean, I can, you can look at it, it's, you're gonna write it down, Mary Jo, it's 877-395-5541.
Thank you.
The other thing is, can we get a procedure or policy to see that the cars are, the trucks in the town are cleaned and washed and checked out? Because I looked at the car out there, that one that Commissioner Hicks and I went to Ocean City on, and it was, drove very nice, I think, but the problem is, it's got trash in it, there was dirty in it. I went to move the seat up, when I came up, my hands were totally black. The car itself is, is really runs well, but I think, if we need to, we're putting a lot of money out to these cars, I think we need to have some kind of procedure or policy in place that they're maintained, keep taking the trash out once in a while, even once a week, or come back every day, and the guys check them and clean them out. That car out there could be a good, washing and detail would be a very good car, and cleaned out. Right now, it's got a lot of trash in it. It's filthy.
Well, who drives the car on a regular basis?
Well, it's used by a lot, a lot of people, that's the thing. So, I mean, each person should take, take turn and clean it out.
It's not technically in my department, it's not my bar.
The dashboard did not fall on her back.
It's not my bar.
It went very well, the dashboard is still sitting in the back, they replaced it, but it's still sitting in the backseat.
What's that?
The dashboard.
Wow. So they did replace that one as well?
Part of it fell off, still sitting in the backseat, and there's trash still in there.
Just to chime, just to chime in, I mean, it was, it was a great event, and not to make, not to make short of what the mayor's saying, but it was a great opportunity for the town of Elton, Elton to go represent one of its health, and representing one of its own at that State Fire, Fireman Association event. And it was just shy, just shy of being embarrassing, just being in the car, and it was just, it was just that filthy. And just to, just to say, again, that it's equipment owned by the town, and it represents the town, and how we take care of what, what basically taxpayers pay for. So I think we just need to do, like the mayor said, a real, a better job as far as taking care of, and setting up some.
The only problem we have to do is have public works allocated, some manpower, some community, just a G D K weapon.
Oh, no, no, I don't.
War tech in his car.
Yeah, you can take time off, you can go and wash your car.
Because they, they have tickets to take the exterior, but actually, you get invited, you need somebody in full three clothes, you know, or back. So I'll get on.
So what I have to say from this, I feel sorry for the employees after driving.
They love it?
They love it? Boy, Dennis, he's been dealing with this for years.
I know, I know, if it didn't happen to me when I was in her car with her, I would not have known. I do have two things. One, I just wanted to let everyone know, I did go to a meeting this morning for the War of 1812 here in Maryland. There were actually 600 sites identified for the signage, and we were one of 25 locations that could get the kiosk. We have had numerous, numerous visitors following the War of 1812 trail. Yesterday, there was a couple from New Jersey that came, they went, left New Jersey, went all the way to Baltimore, and followed it through, and right back home to, to New Jersey. We went, ran out of 500 brochures that we had made in three weeks. I just received two cases from the actual state War of 1812, but people are doing that tour. Which leads me to my next question, and I think Michelle might have this answer. Michelle, the MML Geocash, will that be beginning soon, or?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, they started the registration form for next year, and we did plan a location, but also, it's a $35 registration fee that I can get us registered.
Yeah, that was a wonderful thing for tours throughout the state that MML did, but I did notice, since they come in my office, all towns gave something when they went in their box as a token of their town, some sort of promotional item. If we were to, and this is just a suggestion, if, say they, we have a little note in there, if you're visiting between the eight hours of 8:00 and 4:30, Monday through Friday, which you don't get a lot, you get a lot on the weekends, they can come in to the visitor's center and receive a Town of Elton mug. Just a thought, or we have pens in there, and I think, I think we did pens and possibly pins last time. But people have some great things that they receive at other towns, and they're bringing it back to their town and promoting, I mean, that's what it's all about, is promoting and getting people back here.
Well, at one time, they had a concern that they were gonna sell the mugs, so how much would, what was the sale of individual mugs?
12.72.
12.72, that's split in half, maybe a bottom of, half that price? Or free?
Yeah, they're not moving, I suggest we either do that, or give them away to people for their birthdays, because they're just sitting there taking up space, and ain't moving.
I bought one.
I do.
Well, I was just saying, we need to.
How many do we have left, you know?
What's the line?
Curious, how many we've got left?
2,000?
Okay, we'll see how many we got left.
Just a suggestion, that we have something promotional to go back for them to take with them. with them. And I hope we do do the geocaching again.
Is it, is it, we're making a decision about doing this, so we can prepare for it?
Well, it's thirty-five dollars to sign up your town through M M L, correct?
Thirty-five, I was worried about, you want to do the mug?
Well, no, I'm not saying that. I just, you know, if you want to do a pen or a pin, that's fine, but have something that promotes the town, um, to take back.
Towns registers now, is that the new thing? I knew they were coming up with new procedures.
What is it?
The towns register.
The towns register.
No, because I read that they were going to come up with new procedures and things. A few things different this, this year then.
Yeah, and actually, county tourism is also looking to do the on sale that you were looking, Josh was looking into Elklanding.
Oh, yeah.
The county tourism, we're looking to do it for the whole county.
Wow, that's great.
And then each town will be on that. It's a cellphone, well, you're at Elklanding also, too, but you could go on your cellphone and type in where you want to see, and where you're at, and they'll tell you history of the buildings and a lot of things. It's great. And we're hoping all the restaurants are the ones that sponsor this in Cecil County. We have one on board already, because it's not very much. It's about fifteen hundred dollars for the year. It's just getting all the text in, all the locations, and it's a, it's a great new device that a lot of people are using today.
It's just, each place has a number, and you just punch that number in, and you go there, and again, it tells you all about the history of the place. Right, exactly. Very nice.
Okay, that's all.
I don't know whether this is new or old, but I went over to the Goodwill place to drop off some items, and turned to my left, and I, I understand that we still have some camp sites around for people camping out and all this, but this was around close to five thirty, six o'clock in the evening. And I looked across, well, I guess it would be Marina Park. Somehow or another, we need to make sure that we're not letting, allowing these little camp sites to build up again and just go ahead and ignore it. I noticed it, and I really wanted to call some of my event, but I want to bring it to someone's attention, that we need to go, and if there's parks or, or, or sites being set up, we need to shut it down. Bottom line.
Please allow it to happen there.
Marina Park, well, I, I saw over thirteen people that was just, and here's a, a good one. As I was putting stuff in the, the Goodwill place, there was a guy in a trishcan taking things out and walking it over to the site, and I thought that was a little odd. To take things from a Goodwill site, take it over to the park, whether or not they're using it or doing whatever, that just didn't look good. So I'm bringing it up to someone's attention that we need to shut these parks down as soon as they start building them up. Number one. If we see them, we have a law that says no campground. If you're picnicking and all that in the park, we allow that, but when you're actually moving prop and stuff in the woods, that's a no-no. So, I'd like to bring that up.
So you're basically asking us to implement a policy we already have with respect to notice of property that provide.
It's already in place, Louis. It's already in place. We just need someone to go and make sure it's enforced.
And monitor it. Yeah, I agree.
Okay?
I've actually seen it all that it was growing.
That's one.
Right.
Yeah, I have as well, so.
And, and as far as the, what can we do to stop the people getting in trishcans and pulling out the trash, and leaving the place a mess after they dumped everything out? Looking for scrap, I know what they're looking for.
Yeah.
But now we have it where they take, and, and this is another pep key of mine. If a cart from the Acme is walking up the street, somebody by rights and laws should be able to say, is that your cart? Then you need to take it back, or the owner should be called and ask them, did you leave a cart out on the street for somebody to push? Those people that are peddling these carts down there should be given some kind of written statement to saying, that's a stolen property. That's the way I would look at it. So, we need to either send a letter to these business owners with carts targeted. I'm, I'm not just trying to pick out one or two police places. Send them to the business owners that may have carts and say, please monitor your carts, or we need to make some way where the carts can't leave from, from that premises. I know it's kind of hard when you got to walk your carts to the parking lot, but if one's walking down the street with a bunch of scrap on it, that's not a car, or truck, or any kind of vehicle to, 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 to move that, a, a material. That's a cart for shopping, not for peddling something down the street. So, I'm just bringing that to you.
Your points won't take them, but we tried that before. I think we had a discussion, I don't know if you, if it was just prior to your coming on the board, that the carts out there to the big Elk mall, people were pushing them out of there. Once upon a time, they used to have the little grids or whatever. They couldn't take them out of there. But now you see them all over town. And I agree with you, it might be a second effort to let these stores know that they're leaving, and they're becoming a nuisance.
People are using like cars now. They just take them. And you're walking down the street, and you see somebody walking down the street with a cart, maybe with an Acme bag, or, not, not using Acme, I shouldn't say names, but a, a shopping bag of some kind, so.
The carts aren't cheap. I know they're running about a hundred, a hundred and fifty a per cart. They're not cheap. In some systems, I mean, I don't know if they would do it out here, but I know other ta, other areas that they have this electronic thing goes around the store or the parking lot, and you can't get that cart past that point. Some, some shopping centers have that. It's what they need.
My, my last thing is, I, I don't know whether this is new or old, but Given brought this up. We had Public Works working on the weekend, and I thought that was really good to see a truck from the town going through town, doing something. I know the big thing is about overtime and all that stuff. It's not about overtime right now. Maybe we can talk to the director. Somebody might want to work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They might want to work those days, and they can off-shift their, their, their schedule that way, because we do it at Gore. There are some people that like to work just weekends. Maybe somebody will work four-ten's. Suggestions can always work out if you bring them to the table. So, that was, was a good thing that Given suggested, and it went well. I saw the truck going past the house three or four times, and I heard comments from people, oh, that was nice to see it, uh, somebody working for the town on the weekend. I didn't know they had that. That, so I'm just letting you know, it, it looks well to me.
They're scheduled to work Saturday now.
I'd call Louis, without a trial call means that.
Are they scheduled for overtime?
Work on.
Okay. Did anybody suggest what I'm saying, suggesting now? The four-ten's or the, the regular scheduled? I mean, that's what I'm asking. Maybe bring that to them, and you won't have to worry about overtime.
We can do that with some personnel, not other personnel, because it wouldn't be under supervision. The O R s. Okay, I'll just see if paying to deal with, you don't want to have too many people working on the weekend without a supervisor.
This is a suggestion.
Where we run in Gore as a plant, and they have supervision laid out for different shifts, we don't have that.
No, they don't have, they don't have supervisors, one, and they don't have, we, we're responsible for our own actions. So, don't say that Gore doesn't have supervisors working on weekends. We have people that have just been trained working on weekends, but they're still under the same liability and, and responsibilities. It's people that want to work are suggesting. That's all I'm asking you.
Yeah, because you might have guys who actually want to get out there and do some work for us and help us. Okay, is that it?
Uh, chief, the, the fleet of cars you have out there look good. When are they getting decal?
What?
I said, your fleet of cars look good sitting out there. I said, when are they going to get decal?
They won't get decal until we get the rest of the equipment out. And the rest of the equipment hasn't been delivered yet to the installer. And I can't give you a time.
I was just curious, that maybe we can have some pictures taken, put in the way so that people can see where the tax dollars has gone. Stockton Street has really improved over, particularly the house that sits on the end of Trish, and a lot of that has really gone, really through the other day, so somebody evidently, the town enforcer evidently is doing a, a good job. And the other day, this is a little side joke, not a side joke either, I saw Becky McKinney going into one fifty, I thought I saw Becky, so I swung back around the ballpark and came back around. And then I came back around, and I saw that Becky had gone in, so I'm sitting on the side. This woman was getting in my truck and said, you want me to get in here? I said, ma'am, I don't know what you're talking about. You need to go. You know what she was. I think she was out trying to solicit me. So Bob Listenberg, I thought about you when that happened.
Happened right out of here.
That was right before one fifty. Can you imagine that?
Yeah, because our police and the undercover car are going right down there. They jump in with them all the time.
Yeah. I said, if I was really, I was doing something wrong, I'd, I'd been an undercover person, I'd be locked up in jail.
You'd be locked up.
Now she retired, we've been using all silver, you know.
Yeah.
Big head does pick up.
Mr. Given's, after the meeting, I'll tell you what Mr. Reed and I told this lady.
Okay.
You appreciate this.
Okay, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes. James C. Nicholson, Hart, thirteen North Street, Elkton, Maryland. I'd like to ask a question. What's the protocol for drinking on the streets during the car shows?
Not drinking? I don't know if there's anybody.
Well, there is none right now, but I have been asked to ask the owners on North Street if they would like to have that with the car shows.
Well, the thing is, reason I ask, we're not on an even playing field. I pay for a license, and car show people come with their beer coolers, or just coolers, and they have beer in. They drink in front of my place, and when it rains, they run in with the beer, and I told them, you're not allowed to do that, and they get mad at me. I just want to know where I stand, because I know that I'm not well liked with what's going on downtown Elkton, and I have an alcoholic beverage license. I abide by the law, but it seems like I'm not on an even playing field with the people that are on the street. I don't think I'm doing anything wrong, but I'm sort of getting upset, because I have to say, you can't do this, you can't do that. Next thing I know, people are getting mad at me. And I just like to know where I stand.
Well, I should.
Because the liquor board told me, you're not allowed to do that unless you're missing from the town. Correct?
Correct.
Well, I just want to know where I stand, because I'm sort of feel that, you know, I've been in Elkton all my life. I've been, my family's been selling alcohol for generations, three generations, and I just want to know that I'm going to keep my record clean, but I'd like to have a little support and find out where I stand. That's all.
Is it, are we allowed them to bring their own coolers?
I honestly, I'm at that registration table. I try and take a stroll. I'm at that corner, and we've been, the last one, as you know, was huge, the car show. They could bring it. I would, you know, I'm not one to say they don't. I know they do visit both establishments, whether it's something that the board wants to consider, if they do, I, I'm all for purchasing in the businesses. I, you know, I was just told that they, someone thought I had gotten all the liquor license, and I sell liquor outside at Fall Fest, and you know we do not. It's just the Howard House and, and North Street. That's what we do. It's for them to make the money. And so, you know, that's.
Well, I, I really don't mind, except I want to have, I want to be able to sell it and let the people carry it up in a paper cup.
Paper cup.
I agree with you that you shouldn't have any glass on the street.
Right.
I don't mind them bringing their own beer, but I'd like to be able to sell also, just to make it an even playing field.
Right, right. And I, 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 the board wishes to do, I, I was actually asked to, to mention that, and I requested to ask both you and Howard House if you want to write a letter to ask the board, but you are here, so if, if they want to make a decision on that.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I, I totally agree with you. I mean, I, I walk around to the cars, and they, they bring their coolers, and for you, for you to have to, I mean, for them to go into your place of business with drinks, and then you have to be the bad guy. So, yeah, I, I think we ought to do something. We ought to come up with something.
I don't, I really don't mind them bringing their own stuff because they do a lot of shit. That doesn't bother me.
Right.
But do you think, I'd like to have the same privilege, long as you, how do I do it, where you give it a paper cup, you can't take glass out.
Right.
That's all I want. The same privilege, that's all.
Well, can't we, can't we make a, can't you when you're on the car show or something that let the car show people know, I hope they won't take offense of it, but that no alcoholic beverage would be brought?
I don't mind them bringing their own.
I think what you're saying is, they could go in there, purchase, and come back out on the street with it. Similar to Paul. That's correct?
Yes.
And he'll put it in a paper, plastic container, no glass.
I want to say the privilege, because they asked, and I said, no, because a lot of people come to see the show, and they, they see people drinking, and they come up, they ask me, if I said, I'm sorry, can't serve on account, you're not allowed to, so let them drink. And I said, I'm sorry. That's all I want. The card people, far as I'm concerned, that doesn't bother me. All I want is the same privilege.
Right.
That's no problem. I don't always agree with you, but Louis commented, it's against the law for what they're doing, they're not supposed to be drinking in public. I don't care if they have their own cooler or anything else.
And that, and that's what, that's what I was going to say. I mean, I, I go to a lot of car shows with, with my business, selling automotive paint. I go to a lot of car shows, and often they put them on the signs, exactly what you said, you know, no open drinks, no, you cannot bring the alcohol in. But the establishments, yeah, they can go in and, within the perimeters of, basically, just like what we just passed, they can drink in that, in those confined areas. So, I mean, I, I totally agree, and I, I think we ought to look at.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a crowd that's not going to get unruly or out of line.
I agree with you.
They're, they're there to enjoy their cars, and they're driving thirty to hundred-thousand-dollar vehicles.
They're not drinking that much.
They're not going to take a risk at that.
The area is already blocked off from High Street and North Street, often from, what's it, Bow Street? And is that right?
Where Bow to, well, to South and.
And it's already blocked off, so what we need to identify is within that confined area, that space, is when a, an event is taking place, we need to be able to allow that to happen. And that's what we're saying, during the event. So.
Well.
Either way, if you don't want to have it, fine. I agree with you. I just want, I just want to be able to tell people, I'm sorry, can't serve a drink, or they have, people are drinking on the street. It makes, you know, that's all I want to say.
Well, there's two more scheduled for this summer, July twenty-sixth and August twenty-third. So if it's something this board wants to waive the.
Well, no, why don't we just wait till next, next year? I just want, I'm satisfied with you this year, but when you do it, any other time you have something, and they have their own coolers, make sure the protocol is there for everybody.
Well, well, but we do have time, though, though. I mean, we really do. We can, it's just something that this board needs to agree on.
Well, I just want to have it even.
Because I have a friend from Philadelphia that loves going into your place, and if she could come back out, she'd be very happy.
Yeah, why didn't they ask her that? Well, I just appreciate it. I just want to let her know where I stand on that. I just want to make it.
We have to, Louis, an alcohol waiver for the streets for those two nights.
Allow.
Allowing the businesses that serve alcohol, which would be Howard House and North Street, to bring, serve in a non-breakable container alcohol.
I would say paper, you have to keep canned beer on the street, too.
Paper glasses.
Yeah, because the can will cause a lot of problems. To be buying six, six bags and then.
Right, right.
Or, you know, the big twenty-four hour.
Right.
Well, we might not get this one, we could do the next one, because he drafts something up.
If you want a boat on it, use this boat on it. Suck everyone, I know, I hear.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Flyner.
I make motion that we, as long as Louis drafts this up, Louis, you're writing something now. Can you tell us what you drafted up, because I'll.
I just have Commissioner Flyner motion, but I'm not exactly.
I'm, I'm motion that we allow during the, for, activity, car shows, allow the business owners that sell alcohol to allow the different containers.
To serve.
To serve alcohol.
To allow them leave their establishments.
Long glass.
Go on the street.
I didn't know how to word it.
July twenty-sixth and August, and August twenty-third.
Did I word it right?
I'll second that.
We'll get it worded right.
Yeah, because I can't word it right, but I'd like to allow it.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. A motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't sign up, but I, can I make a couple statements?
No.
No.
Is this, is this, right in the middle of the motion, okay?
I'm sorry, I thought you, it was a meeting.
No, no.
No, not.
I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Uh.
Motion carried. Motion carried.
Alcohol waiver granted to Elkton, mine, uh, granted to a party.
Do you want to do North Street and Howard House or?
No, we said.
Just for our event?
Yeah, just for those, for those two dates.
That's all. She's going to sustain from her vote.
And I'm going to sustain from.
Yeah, we should do it for the Fall Fest too, it covers everything.
We can do it at that time.
Do you want to do the Fall Fest also and?
Well, it's just going to say downtown events during the year of 2012, because you only have the Fall Fest and the car show that covers everything for the year 2012.
Thank you.
Anything else that comes, it becomes new.
You have to make, it happened on the, uh, motion.
What's the date, what's the date of the?
The Fall Fest is the 21st and 22nd of September.
September.
Yeah.
So we have to make amendment, I make amendment to the motion for the Elkton lines of fence to allow alcohol.
Now, now, second.
Well, he just made amendment.
All right.
In the area that's.
All in favor? All right, you've got a second and all of them, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. You got it straightened out?
Alcohol waiver on the lines for three days.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, I think we got it.
Bob Listenberg, 1051 Lane. Tonight, you discussed a lot of things that should have been discussed and then I, then I commend you for what you're doing. These last 15 minutes, you've accomplished a lot more than you had in play a lot of different issues. My question is, Artesian's water line, do they, their water, when it's transmitted to the Route 40 Carter and such, where does it come through the town water lines, do they have a separate line coming from Gulliver line down?
Means to us?
That's come down to the border.
We've got water coming from them to our reservoir, that's.
No, 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 I'm talking, you're talking about the YMCA, Route 7 out there and Artesian County was supplying, Artisan's been supplying water to that area, correct?
Right.
Where does that water come from? Does it come from the town Elkton through your lines and get to there?
The town supply. Yeah, we supply the water, we, we talk to them.
Artesian doesn't have infrastructure out there.
No.
Or, Artesian is, is supplying water to people on Route 7 and they're sending a separate bill to them, so where's that water coming through the town Elkton?
It's our water, we're billing Artesian.
Yeah, they, they buy it from us.
They buy it from us.
Okay, they buy it from you.
The county bought it before.
All right.
Now, Artesian's buying it.
Buying it from you. And they're selling water to those people out there cheaper than what we're paying here in town.
No, they pay, actually they pay double.
No, they don't pay double.
Yes, they do. Oh, they pay.
I know one person that's very close friend of mine and his bill is a lot less than mine.
No, we sell it to Artesian, which is our town rate.
Okay.
They can sell it for any amount they want.
Actually, they're selling it to their customers, less than they're buying it from us.
Okay, well, as long as the town, if it's coming through this, our water lines or your water lines, it should be billed to them and you are doing it, that's most of it.
Yeah, well, the rate has a town rate.
That's my question, because, so say, he's got, uh, his water bill is, is much cheaper than mine.
The water bill Artesian charges is based on their tariff that's approved by the Public Service Commission. We're not governed by them, we set our own rates, so they, they're tariff free, they don't have any choice.
But when you're discussing with the YMCA, that's where I was confused as to where this water was coming from. Thank you.
Okay, can get a motion to have a closed meeting, uh, Law 14, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened, discuss the matter directly related to a negotiation strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal, that public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the board to participate in the competitive bidding or purpose process.
What's closed meeting for?
Discuss the contract. Discuss the contract.
To discuss the Third Amendment of the Artesian agreement, that's what I want.
Do we have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.